Five thirty, I'm going to call this meeting to order. The first item is a citizens' general discussion. If you or somebody who has something general you would like to discuss that's not specific to the agenda tonight, now would be the time to do so. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the citizens' general discussion and proceed with our regular agenda. So the first item we have is the oath of office. We've actually already, our renewing members, myself, Nick and Tyler, have already signed those oaths of offices. So I'm just acknowledging that we have all re-upped. And we're going to next move on to our annual election of chairperson and vice-chairperson. So I need a motion for, let's begin with chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Lisa Latusha as chairperson for planning and zoning.
Second.
Any, anybody else out there want to? No? All right, we'll go ahead and, all those in favor of myself continuing as chair, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Next up, we've got vice-chairperson. We need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Brian Leslie as vice-chairperson.
Second.
Thank you. Any others? All those in favor of approving Brian as vice-chairperson, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, moving on to case number PP 2025-001. Applicant Cody Farr, representing Alps Stevieville LLC, is requesting a preliminary plat of property located at 3040 West Washington Street, being parcel R 77987A 0613 Pearson Henry of the city of Stevieville, Eretown County, Texas. Mr. Killen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, you might recall this property was brought to us not long ago for a rezon to R3 for multi-family building project. And this property was acquired through a conveyance plat at the time when it subdivided a larger parcel. And so we moved forward with the conveyance plat. Been working with the developer and his team in the submission of the building and civil permits. The civil permit has actually been approved and there's start work underway now on the site. They're getting close to the building permit. And I realized that I had failed to ask him to come back for a preliminary plat, so we're asking for approval of a preliminary plat with conditions. I have the six conditions listed there. And Madam Chair, I see that Mr. Cody Farr didn't make it tonight, but Mr. Wes Bishop is here. Should the commission have any questions of the developer, I will certainly answer any questions the commission may have to best my ability. And that's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Will there be access from the back of the property through Bob Wyatt?
Don't believe there's a secondary access back there from the site plan, but it's been a while since I've actually looked at that, so I may need to defer that to...
I know it was real close, but I wasn't sure.
I know they have sewer access from the backside of the property, but I don't believe there's going to be any egress from, ingress, egress from the site plan.
There will not be a normal road, a normal entrance and upward exit from Bob Wyatt?
Thank you, sir. Last thing I might clarify as well, Madam Chair, is we do have in your packet a copy of the conveyance plat and the preliminary plat submitted. And the preliminary plat has been reviewed and the conditions are listed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any additional questions for Mr. Killen? I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor or against this preliminary plat request? I will close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Make a motion that we approve case number PP 2025-001 with conditions.
Second.
All those in favor of approving this preliminary plat with conditions, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Wes.
All right. Next up, case number RZ 2025-001. Applicant Jason Nitschke, representing Horton Commercial Properties LLC, is requesting a rezon for property located at 791 North Clinton Avenue, being parcel R 33319 of S 5700 Shepherd &amp; Collins, block 14, lots 12 and 13 of the city of Stevieville, Eretown County, Texas, from R3 multi-family to R 2.5 integrated housing. Mr. Killen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to provide a little bit of background on this property, Mr. Nitschke, and he is here tonight if the commission has any questions of him. He has actually filed for some variance requests on this property for lot depth because his site plan allows, if the rezon is approved, would allow for a smaller lot dimensions for these structures, duplex structures. But he will not be able to get the depth because he's wanting to position these where they will front Shirley Street. So the variance requests were scheduled for last week before the board of adjustment. Different plan was in play with the weather that came in, and so that's being postponed until the 30th. So the commission will be acting on the recommendation for the zoning before the variances are granted. However, the variance should be determined before the city council has to make the final decision. And that will simply give the developer a clear path for knowing that he can configure the lots as presented in this project. And we do have the site plan included in the packet for your review. His conceptual plan is for duplex-style structures. They will be platted separately, and if the rezon is approved, this, we will have to return to the commission with a replat for approval. So Mr. Nitschke is basically just going through this process with the board of adjustment and the planning and zoning commission slash city council to make certain that the property that he's interested in acquiring will actually meet the site plan that he's proposing. I've had some comments from adjacent neighbors and some inquiries from adjacent neighbors. Had one letter of support that actually came from Mr. Ed Horton. And basically, with this request, it's currently zoned R3. He's asking for R 2.5 for a duplex project as pictured. And with this request, it will actually have a lesser density for the development of that property than it would be if it were to remain R3, which would allow for 24 units per acre. He's asking for a reduction of that. And as you see, he'll have only eight units on the property. I'm glad to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions for?
Do you know about how many bedrooms this property might have?
I believe each unit has two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms?
Aren't we talking in the conference of plan to try to keep all the stuff in at the back?
We are. Now, that's a great question, and actually had a pre-development meeting with another developer recently. These are more in line with single-family structures, and parking is pretty common in front of single-family structures, triplex or above. We are trying to push the parking to the back, so great, great point being made. Not all lots will be able to accommodate that, especially when we take in drainage plans into consideration. Ultimately, we don't have our land use regulations updated yet, and so we don't have a mechanism to require rear parking. And so that's being explored. We do have a RFQ that should be coming, or RFP coming out in the next, actually should be published next week, where we are going to be trying to bring someone onboard to help us with that land use update. Great question.
Any other questions?
With the number of rooms that are being provided, is it, do you think that there's adequate parking with what he's got measured out here?
Yes, sir. Meets the requirements of parking based on the intended use of the property. These are going to be individually platted. It's not going to be student housing necessarily actually platted for sale, where it could be sold. Obviously, Mr. Nitschke could hold on to these properties and rent them out, but I think the overall intention is to platten separately and market them for sale.
Okay. How high are those apartments going to be?
Within the 35-foot limitation.
Pardon?
There's a 35-foot limitation in each zoning district, and I don't believe these are going to be anything more than a single-family, one-story, one or two-story. Two-story, but below the 35-foot limitation.
Yeah, let's wait, and I'm going to open a public hearing, and you can ask your questions there. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions for Steve? Okay, Mr. Nitschke, would you like to add anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Sir, if you'd like to come up to the microphone, state your name and address and your questions. If you like.
Oh, about now?
Yes.
At noon, my name's Thomas Jackson. I live on 863 West Shirley, straight down the road from that place. And I'm concerned about how high that level is going to be and where that parking, parking's going to be for all those cars in that area. They've came in, you know, of course, you know those apartments down, not down the street by the railroad track, that's all come in there. So that's my concern, is how high that apartment, what it's going to be, and how many units is going to be in that area, and concerned with the parking in that area.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other questions or concerns? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Steve, can you address his questions?
Yes, ma'am. So, as mentioned, each zoning district is limited to a height of 35 feet per structure. Anything beyond that would require a board of adjustment, variance request, and there are limitations on that based on the total height of the structure as well. This project being only two stories, I can't imagine it being more than 24-foot in height. Maybe a little bit more at the ridge line, but in fact, don't get close to that 35-foot limitation at all. The parking is, in the diagram, it's, these will be two parking spaces per unit, which is a requirement by city ordinance. So it'll be two parking spaces per unit on-site per dwelling unit. And each individually-platted lot will have a duplex, which would be a two-bedroom on each side. So four, four total beds for each duplex. And I would ask that we have Mr. Nitschke correct me on any of those statements. We're basically looking at a site plan. We don't have any formal building plans submitted as of yet, but we've had multiple discussions with Mr. Nitschke, and I'm pretty certain I'm addressing that question correctly.
Is that accurate, Mr. Nitschke?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Yes, is it, sir, does that sufficiently answer your questions? We've closed the public hearing. I'm going to ask commissioners to make a motion.
Make a motion that we recommend, recommend city council approval of RZ 2025-001.
Second. All right. Any discussion, commissioners?
I'm kind of spooked by this just because of it being so tight. But I do like the fact that they're trying to reduce the number of occupants in that area because of the traffic around the school already. But I'm not saying much in my way of trying to alleviate kids walking to school. That's a lot of driveways to cross. So...
Are you ready to vote? All those in favor of recommending to council approval of this rezon request, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Nitschke. Your next up is city council. Next up, case number RZ 2025-002. Applicant Shannon Hammond, representing Team SNK Enterprises LLC, is requesting a rezon for property located at 230 Tarleton, being parcel R 78009 of S 2600, City Edition, block 63, lot 23 of the city of Stevieville, Eretown County, Texas, from B1 Neighborhood Business to B3 Central Business District. Mr. Killen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Hammond and Mr. Hammond are requesting a rezon for allow for more latitude, basically highest and best use for the property in the area. You might recall in 2023, we had an amended plat on this property. And also in December 2023, we had a... Everything okay out there?
I just need to make sure we got it...
And also, pardon you, Madam Chair, also in 2023, the adjacent property known as 252 East Tarleton was recommended for rezoning from B1 to B3, so this would match the sister property of ownership here. City council approved the rezon in 2024. So basically, Ms. Hammond, I believe, had a business concept back in '23, and I think they have decided that perhaps that concept is a little too challenging at the moment. And so they're asking that we consider the B3 to allow them more opportunities to do something productive with that property. And with that, Madam Chair, I'm glad to answer any questions. They are here tonight for the commissioners' questions as well.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Steve?
The sewer access, is that a two-inch or six-inch? It's hard to tell with that diagram.
Great question. Let me see if I can look at that a little bit closer. Looks like it's six-inch.
Okay.
They have access to six-inch on Tarleton Street. It's two-inch on the...
Floor.
Floor, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. and Mrs. Hammond, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay. I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak for or against this rezon request? Close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I'd like to recommend the council approval of RZ 2025-002.
Second.
That was tight. I think it was Tyler, was it?
It's mine.
Oh, oh, got it. All right. All those in favor of recommending to council approval of this rezon request, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Your next up is city council. Thank you for coming tonight. All right. Next up, we've got case number SW 2025-001.
Okay. Nice to meet you, sir.
Applicant Zane Cole is requesting a waiver from section 155.6.11 relating to sidewalk requirements for property located at 185 West Park Street, being parcel R 31466 of S 3500 for a first edition, block 35, lot 7 and 8. Mr. Killen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, you might recall this property was brought before the commission late last year for both a rezon and a replat. And Mr. Cole was intending to take the lot at 185 and he broke that into R 2.5 dimensions so he can build another single-family home on his property. He is asking now, in preparation for that development, to have the consideration for a sidewalk waiver at this property. You might recall there is a minor waiver process that staff can utilize to approve sidewalk or curb and gutter waiver requests. However, once he replatted this property, it no longer met the criteria for the staff level minor waiver. That's why we're here before you tonight. In the staff report, I have a Google image of the curb and gutter, but you might notice there's no sidewalk in the area. If the sidewalk were to be required, he may very well be the only sidewalk there for quite some time. However, the developer, the property owner to the south, has interest in developing his property, and with that, there could be other opportunities for sidewalk to be present in this area. By, I guess, default staff is to recommend that we deny sidewalk waivers because the project or the concept behind that is that eventually, as properties are developed, the city will begin to have more and more sidewalks across the city. In some cases, I can certainly see where it may not be ideal when no other properties in the area have sidewalk. That's why you have the difficult decision or not. And staff will defer that request to you, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve?
I believe that's going to be where one of the centers is, like the town centers for the conference of plans is going to be, is like DJ somewhere.
Up in that area. So I believe in here we have the future land use. If we didn't, that was an oversight on my part, so let's see.
Yeah.
So future land use is designated, and, you know, to your point, that parallels or correlates with my comments, it may not make sense when we look at it, current conditions, but if we think 20 years down the road, as we bring new projects in and properties are redeveloped, if we don't take advantage of opportunities as they present themselves, then, you know, we'll continue to have patchwork sidewalks across the city, so...
Would the sidewalk, would it wrap around the corner or go...
It'd have to cover both frontages, yes, sir.
That's law sidewalk for one piece of property, but...
Yes, sir.
It's kind of...
Is Mr. Cole here tonight?
I don't see him.
Don't see Mr. Cole.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor or against this waiver request? I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion.
I motion that we recommend denial of the request. Is that, of case number CG 2025-001?
SW.
SW, yeah.
I'll second that.
Discussions?
Got to start somewhere.
That's my feeling.
I was going to say, so I have some people that we drink coffee with, it's off-topic, but not. This curb issue is a very hot topic. If I were to go back there and not make this person get a curb when a friend of mine had to get one, I'd never hear the... And that's not what I'm doing, but I'm just saying that I wouldn't feel right having someone else adhere to it and not making the rest do it. And I know it may not make sense, but down the road, it should.
And keep in mind, this is the sidewalk portion. We're doing curb next, but...
But the way that this area is starting to develop now, we're starting to see more and more activity in this location or part of town. So we start here, maybe it'll trend, and as these smaller lots are bought up and more bigger places put in. That and the college kids run around on scooters now.
All right, we ready to vote? All those in favor of recommending to council denial of this waiver request for sidewalks, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so one, I guess, and Nick. Okay, so that moves forward. Next up, case number CG 2025-001. Applicant Zane Cole is requesting a waiver from section 155.6.04 relating to curb and gutter requirements for property located at 185 West Park Street, being parcel R 31466 of S 3500 for a first edition, block 35, lot 7 and 8. Mr. Killen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, only one additional comment related to this. Again, it is for the sidewalk, I'm sorry, curb and gutter, not the sidewalk. Same comments with one exception. We did, I had a conversation with a Mr. Hopper who owns the property to the south. He was in opposition of any type of waiver for the curb and gutter because he was required to install the curb and gutter for his property, and he feels that it should be developed accordingly to meet those drainage concerns in the area. And with that, Madam Chair, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, I hope in a public hearing, anybody here wish to speak in favor or against this waiver request for curb and gutter? Close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I'd like to recommend to council denial of CG 2025-001.
Second.
We've already got half of that intersection, curb and gutter, already. And if we get two-thirds, it incentivizes the next guy to do it, and it'll clean up that intersection.
Okay. All those in favor of recommending to council denial of this waiver request, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. And ladies and gentlemen, I think we need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Five fifty-five, I think that took us a little longer.